With the EWEB work session, October 19th, 2021, we will start with an agenda check. It's a pretty short agenda. Is there anybody that has anything to say about that? Nope. Great. Then we will move on to our really one and only topic, which is the Draft Wildfire Mitigation Plan Approach and Review. So it looks like it's Rod Price, Tyler Nice, and Janine Parisi.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, President Slusberg. So good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Rod Price for the record, and with me is Janine Parisi and Tyler Nice. I just did want to also do a shout out to the staff. There's a lot of people that have been working on this plan and not just this plan, but mitigation measures, and they'll see and hear some of their work up here. And so I really appreciate all the stuff that's gone on to get us to this point. Just some real quick overview. So Janine and I will walk through some slides. Tyler's going to be available to answer questions, the hard questions. We talked a little bit about this, and we hope this work session will be a little bit more conversational. We've got some time here, so I'm going to go through a few slides. We'll pause and we'll I'll ask some prompting kind of questions, but that'll allow you some time to ask and give some feedback on that portion. I will probably prompt us to move on if we dilly-dally too long in that area, but Janine will be providing some more information after that. So, next slide, please. I guess the other thing I want to say also is thank you all for attending this. I know we've been asking for a lot of input and a lot of work sessions from the board, and I know it takes a lot, but I think as you'll see, this is a critical piece of our mitigation plan requirement is to have the board involved in planning and part of the approval process. So I feel like it's a critical piece of work that we're doing here, but I just want to say thank and acknowledge. Just for a little context, the Backgrounder contained a working draft of the plan, just to kind of give you a feel for what we have in place and what we have going on. We do have a strategic goal, number four, to complete a plan this year. I don't think we'll have a completed plan per se, but we hope to take feedback and continuous some other things that are going on and have a pretty good working draft by the end of the year that'll give a good idea of what's going on. And I guess what I wanted to say too is tonight, we're just going to highlight in our presentation, some of the areas from the Backgrounder. And so also feel free, of course, to ask questions about that if we don't bring it up. So, next slide, please. Little context, the basis of the wildfire mitigation plan itself is the sort of temporary-permanent rule that the Senate has placed into effect. And part of it requires that we develop a wildfire mitigation plan. And so while most of the Senate Bill 726 applies only to IOUs, there's a few components that do apply to us as a consumer-owned utility. And so those two components are really that we have a risk-based plan developed and that we have that plan reviewed and approved by our governing body, which in this case is the Board, and that we turn this in by June 30th. So I would want to say too that besides some of the required components, the plan does contain a whole bunch of things that what I consider good practice and that you see in other, like California, for instance, other plans. And so I think as a matter of good practice, we will be working towards including those components. Because I think actually we'll eventually be held accountable to the same plan as everybody else. But so the first thing that jumps out probably here on this slide that I consider is good practice is that we have a plan purpose. So hopefully you've had a chance to read through this plan purpose. The idea behind it was to tie the requirements we have from the PUC to our strategic plan. So hopefully you see those elements melding in here. Next slide, please. This is just kind of an overview of our approach to planning, and the first statement's fairly obvious. You know, we want to meet the requirements of the, from the PUC. But what we want to do is integrate and build on the existing plans and programs that we already have in place. And back in May, I think we talked to you about some of those things. We've made a lot of progress in those areas, and hopefully those will show in the quarterly report a little bit. The real cornerstone to the PUC requirements are that we have a fire risk assessment-based plan. And so essentially what that means is that we examine our service territory and see where our fire risk is high, and that's a term. And then using that, we're able to prioritize our investments. And also, one of the things we're looking at doing is distinguishing urban risk versus rural risk. And so I'll show you a slide here in a minute of what our zone is. But I think best practices, though, talk about engaging stakeholders. And this is, it's a key to our, you know, planning and incident response is how well we work with our public and other agencies. And finally, another piece of best practice is really to involve a third party. So we have a consultant on board that has done a lot of these plans, and they're actually working with another utility or two in our area. So we hope that that will help provide continuity between other utilities as well, which is, I think, an important piece of working in an area like ours. So, next slide, please. So here's a picture of our service territory. You can see the outlines there. Hopefully you recognize that. The orange areas, obviously the big areas upriver, and then there's a little area down south. So these are the areas that we currently consider high-risk that we apply our programs to. And there's, it should be up on the website now, I think. It's there now. This may change as we get more rigorous. Right now, it's based on ODFW maps, rural fire maps, and then also some of our own operational experience. Next slide, please. I just wanted to throw this in too, because this is the roadmap I'm using to sort of manage our wildfire mitigation work, including the plan. And so basically where we're at is at the end of stage two, we're trying to get our working draft up to speed. But with the target of really having a compliance-ready plan ready. So what we're missing in between those stages is the consultant work and the gap work, and so that independent auto work. Next slide, please. Just wanted to highlight here some of the key elements for the Board and where you folks come in is we'll bring a compliance-ready plan in May for review and discussion kind of like this. And then in June, we'll bring a consent item for approval, official approval. We'll go ahead and turn that plan into the PUC, and they have said they will supposedly get the plan analyzed back to us in a couple of months. And any modifications or whatever, of course, we'll have to do. So the other part is, though, that there will be a yearly cyclic kind of review. And I think currently, right now, we're targeting an April or May review, you know, right around the beginning of fire season and coinciding with our capital planning. And I did want to note too that I think you'll see the results of the plan, some of the things will pop out, projects that both O&amp;M and capital projects, and they'll be earmarked with wildfire mitigation on them. So there will be another source of input that the Board can comment and take part in. So, next slide, please. So at this point, I'm going to kind of pause, and I'm just going to throw out a few prompts, I guess. And we're curious, you know, does the plan purpose resonate with you? Is there any gaps in that? Is there anything in the approach here you think we're missing? Is there anything on the roadmap or the timing of things that seems out of place? And then I really didn't refer to this in the presentation, but there's a roles and responsibilities section in the draft that we want to make sure is well thought out and explained. So with that, I'm just going to pause. And I assume people will put their hands up either electronically or so we can see them. So I'll turn it over to Mindy. How about that?
Sure. Great. Matt, go ahead. Your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay? Great. Thanks. Thanks, Rod. A few things. You thanked us for having an extra meeting, and I just want to turn that back and say thank you all. I know it's extra work on your behalf as well, not only to, you know, set up a meeting with us and engage in this conversation, but the work that goes into this planning. So much appreciated. In terms of the plan purpose, I think it looks right. I'm grateful that it goes beyond just we're trying to meet the letter of the regulations from the PUC. I encourage us to continue to move that way, that, you know, trying to make our wildfire mitigation efforts as robust as possible, you know, given the resources that we have. So I appreciate that. And the roadmap and roles and responsibilities looks good to me. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Sonia, go ahead. You're muted, Sonia.
I tried to unmute multiple times, and it kept clicking out of the screen, kept disappearing when I tried to unmute. All right, so I was just looking back at some of the slides, and I'm curious a little bit about how the determination of the at-risk areas is made. Is that, I know it was mentioned a little bit in the packet, but if you could outline that a little bit more for me, because it's, it seems like it's just up the McKenzie and basically in South Eugene. And those are the main areas. I'm guessing that's just due to tree density around those, you know, particular power lines.
Sure. So what, the state of Oregon, ODFW, I think in 2016 created some fire risk maps, and they used extensive satellite and territory and terrain and all kinds of criteria that went into those. And so those maps were used to lay on top of our service territory and create some ideas about where they, where the higher-risk areas were. Also, the Lane County's got some, and Janine will have to correct me on the exact term of the map. But there's also, the rural fire districts have some danger maps as well. So we've kind of cross-checked against those. And then the other thing we did was we had some internal discussions with our operations folks who had knowledge of the trees and so forth. So if you'll, if you, kind of, those areas kind of encompass entire feeders. So our, so we can apply our operational changes to entire feeders at once to make sure that we don't miss anything. So those are the three basic things. In the future, what you'll see is, you know, science has progressed, and there's some much more rigorous kind of methods to determine these. You'll probably see some finer tuning of these maps, and that's what the consultants, ICF, will help us do.
Okay. I mean, the timeline looks fine. It seems like most of that's dictated by the, you know, SB 762. I am a bit curious about the purpose in that it doesn't seem to say anything about kind of coordination with other stakeholders, groups, you know, government entities in the area that we could coordinate with. And I don't know if that's because of the requirements of SB 762, or if there is an opportunity there to, you know, outline that, you know, there's a lot of the upfront work that we're doing in our service territory is on us. But as we kind of implement more of the, you know, responses to red flag alerts and things of that nature, there may be a higher level of coordination. So I don't know if there's a place for that, or if it has to be more narrow, depending on the requirements of that bill. But that was the only thing that I saw that kind of stuck out to me.
Thank you. I think that's a really good comment. We'll take a look at that.
Thanks. And thank you for your time, too. I know this is a lot of work on you all as well. So it's very important, though. So thank you. Okay, I'm done.
Go ahead, Frank, and then John Borowski.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. One of the things that you may want to explain a little bit is, you know, we're working on what we call the working draft, which is basically a plan. But we also have this compliance deadline. And what do we know about all of the compliance requirements? It seems like some of them are the reason that this evolves a little bit, and we can't just put a stake in the ground now, is that there's still work sessions, there's still some things going on at the state. That, you know, how firm is the requirement defined at this point? Or will that continue to evolve, not just past the June deadline, but beyond?
Yeah, I mean, that's the tricky part of this right now. The, so the Senate Bill, the, in essence, the PUC has to figure out rules around how to enforce it. And so they're in the middle of still developing those rules. There's the, I'd say they're pretty close, but they're still out for comment, and there's still lots of discussion going on with those. The investor-owned utilities need to, and there's probably not much wiggle room on this, they need to be compliant by the end of the year. And so these requirements probably should be out by, in a month or two, so that they can be compliant to them. For some reason, they've delayed the consumer-owned, the consumer-owned, customer-owned utilities till June. But yeah, the requirements are still open, and a few of them are up for debate. But the sense I get from listening in on the conversations is they're not going to change much. So we pretty much know what they're going to be. But they're, and they're going to continue to evolve. I know they are. So there's this so-called, these are temporary-permanent rules. And so they wanted to put something in quickly, and so this is the methodology that the legislature uses to get something in quickly. So I expect we'll see more changes over the next couple of years.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. I really appreciate the comment about coordination and the purpose, too, because I think that's going to be a big part of moving forward. Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, so I just have a question and then a couple of comments. So the question kind of goes to one of Sonia's and the map and where we're going to. So it seems to me that the danger is more with high-voltage transmission lines as opposed to feeder lines. Because, I mean, I think of the hills, like when we have a snow incidence and we have outages from trees going over lines, those lines are less susceptible for fire. Is that what I'm understanding? And that's why we're just concentrating on the high-tension feeder or transmission lines?
No, statistically, distribution of systems start way more fires than do transmission, usually because it's not as well taken care of, to be honest, and it's closer to the ground and more likely to get hit. There's just more of it. So the upriver service territory includes, we have a lot of distribution upriver as well as some transmission. So most of it is centered around distribution feeders.
Well, I'm mostly considering the South Eugene one. I mean, I see a lot of areas in South Eugene that aren't in orange that would be, I mean, like the neighborhood that I live in, or Laurel Hill Valley, or some of those other, you know, sloped hills that aren't in the wildlife mitigation or wildfire mitigation.
Yeah, okay, I'm following you a little bit. I mean, the, all we have to go on is what ODFW has supplied to us for the most part in the rural districts. And so that's the basis of our map. And I think what you'll find is a much more rigorous analysis here in the next six months or something like that to start fine-tuning and answering some of your questions. You know, why not this and why that, that kind of thing.
Okay, so that goes to my next, the two comments that I have on this is, one is, you know, we have the minimum that we have to do to be compliant. And I hope that that's not what our goal is. I hope we are looking for more than minimum compliance. And I think that as a utility, that's something that we've always gone above and beyond. So that's kind of may tie in in the iterations of this. You know, this is the first step. Let's at least make sure we're compliant. But I would also like us to push beyond that and make sure that, you know, the South Hills are safe and those types of things. And then the other thing that I was curious about is, you know, when you talk about funding and capital, putting projects in the plan, I'm wondering where the balancing act of is, if you put it in the plan and down the road, funding comes from either federal or state things that you can, you can use federal or state monies, if it's in your, if it's in your plan, then you can apply for those funds. But then if you put it in the plan and those funds don't, aren't available, then you've got to use your own capital. I'm just wondering how that balancing act goes, because I would like to get as much put in the plan if more funding comes along, and they say if it's in your plan, you can use this funding.
Yeah, I mean, there's two components, really. There's sort of, I think, and Janine will talk about this a little bit, but the most of the work is done maybe at the O&amp;M level where you're changing out equipment. So there will be capital projects, though, that hopefully can get some funding for, like you said, from other sources. But we have a fairly robust amount in our capital plan. So what we're really hoping is that as we go through this analysis with our contractor, we'll get some so-called gap list, and it'll be like 20 projects. And we'll go, okay, well, 20 projects, that's $100 billion. You know, I'm just picking a number. But, and then we'll come back and we'll say, okay, so here's the highest-risk areas, and this is what we think we can apply these to, and here's how we think we can spend that money through time. And that's where we'll come back to the Board and with this, it's like a new, almost a new category within the, you know, is it compulsory? Is it risk-based? Is it, you know, so then we'll be able to come back to the Board and say, okay, if we want to do this, then we need to transfer money from here, or shuffle it from there, or add more money, or, you know, whatever it is. And so the other thing about this is we, I want to make sure we have that risk-based piece down. Because if I spend money here, I want to know that the risk goes down appreciably, right? And so we're spending our money wisely for the best, I guess, return as possible. And one of the best returns possible is to trim trees like crazy. So we're already in the process of doing that and ramping that up. And that's not capital.
Right, yeah, just, that's what I was hoping, is that, you know, we've got a long list of things. And if all of a sudden the Fed say, hey, if you have this in your plan and you can underground this, but, and we'll give you money to underground something that we didn't have in our budget. But if the Fed say if it goes to wildfire mitigation, it'll be funded. So that would be great. Thank you.
I think that's a great comment.
Frank, I see that your hand is raised. And Tyler, you had wanted to say something before. I don't know if you still want to jump in.
Oh, sorry.
So I would, the one thing I would add to what Rod Price just mentioned on the capital side is that it's a benefit to get these in the plans, Commissioner Borowski, not only for wildfire mitigation, but when it comes to capital, a lot of these kinds of projects have multiple benefits, including reliability, you know, in the midst of storms and other things. So it's, a lot of these projects will have multiple benefits. And so, as well as, you know, just general reliability. So I think that it's good to have a robust list there. We probably have more than enough to keep us busy for quite a while. And then, as Rod said, we'll prioritize based on what we see, the sort of the stacking of benefits and the mitigation of risk. So that's how I would approach it. But to your point, there will probably be a lot of items that we have on the list for opportunities.
I'll chime in if a chance. I just wanted to add a little clarification to that original question on the transmission versus feeder talk. And when Rod was referring to that, the feeders are the lower voltage 1247, like neighborhood thoroughfares, if you will, for that, with the taps being, you know, off to the different streets and such. The transmission, though, exactly like Rod said, it's classically a higher-speed trip-off control, and it does provide lower risk. But when you look at those maps, we're not, we're not like excluding one type of wire or not. Really, it boils down to construction, proximity to, you know, vegetation, and also, you know, if it's overhit or underground. So just letting you know, if there's a zone, it's, everything's captured in there regardless of voltage or what it is. And when we go through this next phase of analysis, you know, what we have access to right now, that's the publicly available fuel maps, is kind of coarse, as Rod was saying. When we do this next phase of analysis, we'll get more granular, and we'll see if we overshot or if we need to roll in some more. So that'll be part of the process.
And Tyler, one of the things about transmission is that it tends to get a lot of attention, just in general, because it tends to go for hundreds and thousands of miles because of, and therefore through federal lands and state lands and forests. And so the risk of exposure from a grid perspective can be pretty high because of the, just the thousands of miles that it covers. But within our territory, we have the most control and the most ability to sectionalize and implement different operational techniques at the feeder level. So it makes a little more sense for us to concentrate on that.
All right, well, I guess I'm last up, and I just have a comment and a couple of questions. And my comment is that I am really supportive of going above and beyond what is required of us. I think I've heard that from some other Commissioners, too. I think that oftentimes EWEB does that. We're kind of, we're like big thinkers, and I really appreciate that about the organization. So I'm supportive of that. My questions are, one of them is about the stakeholders, engaging the public stakeholders. And I'm just curious, like, what kind of engagement are you looking to get? Is it just informing them about the dangers of wildfires and what we're doing? Or are you looking for suggestions to add to the plan, or both?
Mostly, it's about coordinating, but yeah, and suggestions to add to the plan. I think, and Janine's going to cover this a little bit more in later in the presentation, but so I'll let her cover that when she gets there. How's that?
Great. Sounds good. Didn't mean to jump ahead. And then my other question, I guess, directly relates to the questions and feedback you're looking for right now. And that is just about the timeline. And if we're looking to kind of finalize this in April, does that give us enough time then to implement what is that we want to do for the upcoming fire season? I'm sure you've already thought about this, but just curious, like, are there things that would be like, kind of, rolling, like rollout of approaches, or are we kind of like ready to go as fire season hits?
Sure. I mean, that's a great question. So one of the things we've done is earmarked a million dollars in the capital plan for projects that will help with wildfire mitigation projects. But kind of going back to the premise, what we're trying to do right now is just build on the existing programs that we've already had in place for the last two, three years, and continuing to ramp those up. And then after we get through with the gap analysis, we'll have a stack of projects as Commissioner Borowski has talked about. So we have plenty to do and plenty of work. And in some ways, we're kind of limited by tree crews and some of those things. But we are keeping up on everything in our high-risk circuits, both inspections and and electrical inspections and tree trimming. And so those are areas of focus, and that's why we have them identified, so we can really focus on those, make sure we get that done yearly, and spend our money in the right spots.
Great. Thank you. I think that was all of us.
Okay. Janine, I'm just going to wow us with all the other things we're doing, so up to you.
Oh, thank you for the shout-out, Rod. I appreciate that. And thanks for the time tonight, Commissioners. I'm just going to walk through some of the risk mitigation actions that are already underway. And some of those are going to be really familiar to you, and some may be a little bit new. So if you think about wildfire mitigation as a continuum, you're really starting with a strong foundation of thorough system maintenance and timely replacement for operational safety to minimize the chance that equipment failures are going to spark a fire. And then moving up that continuum, And then moving up that continuum, you're looking at capital investments that'll make the system more resilient to wildfire. We know we're not going to be able to stop all fires, but we can harden the grid to protect our infrastructure and the communities that surround them. Uh, mitigation planning also includes situational awareness during wildfire season, this can involve changing. Uh, field practices with our crews, what kind of work they do and where they're doing that work. And then equipping them with fire suppression equipment based on different weather conditions, so we can be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And then during those extreme weather events, those red flag days, we can take actions that reduce the chances that our equipment becomes an ignition source. I'd say that de-energizing lines would be the, you know, action of last resort. Next slide. Got a couple of examples to walk through here. Um, as Rod was talking about the uh, enhanced inspections is a really important part of the uh, risk mitigation plan, and it's also a focus of the P U C rulemaking effort. And this just really means more frequent and thorough patrols in the higher risk parts of our system. As a result of this year's upriver inspection, we've accelerated accelerated replacement of about a hundred crossarms. Which is a time-consuming process, but it reduces the risk that a deficient crossarm can bring a section of line down in those dry windy conditions. Another project that's in the planning phase is to fully decommission the sixty-nine K V line that runs from Walterville to Thurston substation. This line's no longer needed with the Holden Creek substation in service and the agreement to flow power via B P A's one fifteen K V line. Next slide, please. A couple other examples have to do with vegetation management, and this is really critical to uh, wildfire mitigation, because when utility equipment is involved in wildfire, it's often found that the ignition source. Is vegetation that comes into contact with wires. So maintaining line clearance even during adverse weather conditions is a pretty essential action. And the P U C rulemaking is moving towards trim cycle mandates. Luckily, our existing vegetation management program with annual pruning in high-risk areas should meet these stricter standards already. This week, we contracted for helicopter trimming service, and this will reestablish the clearance along the heavily vegetated transmission, uh, Carmen transmission corridor. This method will accomplish in about five days what could typically take months or longer to complete, and it frees up our tree crews to catch up on some of that in-town pruning work. Uh, we're working with a B P A on this project and coordinating a media opportunity to showcase this work tomorrow, so we're hoping to have better footage to show you very soon. Next slide. In terms of grid hardening, there's a number of opportunities to use more fire-resistant materials during upgrades and replacements. This pictures um, work at Deer Creek where crews are replacing the wooden transmission poles with metal ones. So we've taken the opportunity to also reconfigure some distribution lines to a slimline format. It's basically reframing your overhead to a single conductor, which in in essence reduces the number of points of contact for vegetation and really reduces your wildfire risk. And in terms of undergrounding, I just wanted to remind folks that we do have funding available to support our upriver customers with undergrounding their services, they rebuild as another example of a mitigation action that's we're already taking. Next slide, please. So this slide might be a little hard to see, but this is a preliminary design to harden the feeder that's running from the Dillard substation over to Willamette Street in South Eugene. So this is about a one point six million dollar FEMA grant-funded project. And like Frank was saying, this has the co-benefits of improving reliability during winter storms, but also fire risk reduction. Through a combination of undergrounding some sections and reconfiguration along that line. This project will be in design for uh, twenty twenty-two for construction by twenty twenty-three. We've done two other similar projects in the South Hills using these FEMA grant funds, so this is the last of that series of, I think, sixteen or seventeen funded projects. Next slide. I already talked about situational awareness in a previous slide, but I just wanted to note that I'm excited that we'll be partnering with the University of Oregon to install the first alert wildfire camera in the one twenty-six corridor. Up at our Smith Ridge communication site. An important feature of the Alert Wildfire Camera system is it's available for public viewing online, so anyone can who's taking a look can report suspected fires. As the host of this site, EWEB, will be able to control the camera view with panning and tilting, but we can also grant control to other public safety partners, so we have more eyes in our upper watershed area. Next slide, please. And then at that top of that pyramid is the um, Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program. And in this situation, EWEB's made a lot of strides this year operationalizing our P S P S program, which is triggered by a red flag warning. So during red flag events, we're changing the operational settings for those circuits in high-risk areas, so they're more sensitive to irregularities and trip offline. When these protective settings are in place, we will not re-energize a line until we do a visual control to confirm it's safe to do so. So de-energizing lines, particularly during extreme fire weather, introduces other risks to the public. So there's a lot more work to do to fully build out a P S P S program. I'd say there's two essential pieces of work to be done, one is to make sure we have the best available weather data for P S P S decision-making. And then a system for advanced notice and coordination with our public safety partners and impacted customers. Next slide, please. Oh, and I'm at my question, so and I would just want to ask, given the time, should I just run through my, I like have three or four more slides, do you want to break here or should I keep going?
Uh, keep going.
Okay, next slide, don't forget these questions. Uh, you asked before about community cage engagement strategies, and this is a really important piece of the work, so. After the twenty twenty wildfires, this issue has really been on top of the mind for our EWEB customers. And we've made a lot of progress in our public outreach and education efforts, we've got a communications plan, we have got a dedicated webpage. We've done a social media campaign on wildfire prevention and awareness, a number of newsroom articles. And hopefully you got to see the brochure that was in your packet. We've standardized our red flag communications for both public and critical infrastructure partners to raise awareness of fire danger. And for the potential of prolonged outages. I'd say there's still a lot of opportunity for increased inter-agency partnership, um, and that includes. Involving them and looking at our plan and the actions in the plan and our high-risk circuits, so it's it's a two-way street, I would say. I have a meeting later this week with our Lane County partners on a grant application, they're looking at for a coordinated wildfire prevention marketing campaign. So synergizing and aligning our messaging would be the goal of that project. And then we're looking to schedule a roundtable meeting with area utility general managers focused on wildfire mitigation plan development. Next slide. We talked a little bit about performance tracking, and this is an area where I think we can go above and beyond the P U C requirements. Um, benchmarking is really important to um, track progress and identify gaps. We're proposing an annual review and presenting that at least by May, so it aligns with your capital planning process. And I've got a couple of specific metrics that are really more food for thought for you and would really appreciate some feedback on this. We've got some time to think through these between now and the December board meeting where the twenty twenty-two goals will be discussed in more detail. Next slide. And on the issue of metrics, I wanted to just throw some highlights from this past year's outreach campaign. I won't read the the words on the slide, but it's really an indicator of public interest when you look at that red flag warning post, we had over eighteen thousand views. On that, and that's more than some of our high-profile winter storm outages engagements, so people are really paying attention and want to partner with us on this work. And I have to just appreciate the support of our stellar communications team who translate my ideas into something that's really great content and tangible for the public. Next slide. And with this, I'll just wrap up in closing and just say, while this wildfire mitigation plan is a work in progress, we're not starting from ground zero. We understand the urgency of this issue to the board and to the public. And I'd say we're well-positioned to leverage our strategic plan's focus on safety and reliability to support this work moving forward. And I'll turn it back over and look forward to more discussion.
Great, thank you, Janine. Uh, is there anyone who wants to start us off with some questions? Comments? Go ahead, Matt.
All right, uh, thanks for the presentation, Janine, and uh, and for the intro there, Rod, and and really to the whole team that. Put this uh, this plan, this working draft together. Um, this working draft, in my opinion, is really solid, that you're clearly headed in the right direction, um, have all the all the pieces that need to be there, and um, thanks for doing that work, I look forward to seeing the. The final version as it gets further refined. It's really great to see you cataloged all the mitigation actions that EWEB's already taking, and it's really great to see, not surprising. That we're, you know, we're certainly investing in that already, or I feel it makes me feel like way less, not that we would be behind eightfold, but. The the, you know, cataloging what we're already doing demonstrates that um, we're we're not, you know, caught flat-footed here, um, which is great to see. Uh, my greatest concern um, is not so much about the the mitigation strategies laid out here, it's about the um, the communications and preparation for public safety power shut-off. That, um, you know, I think people sometimes anticipate power outages in the winter, but not so much in the summer, and so, um, you know, I can see you're already leaning that way, and I just want to encourage you to lean in there that, uh. You know, that we really get creative about how we communicate that and help people prepare for that. Um, I I I hope it's not inevitable, but at some level, but somehow it does feel like, you know, we're going to wander into territory where we're having to do that, and I just want to make sure that people aren't surprised. So, um, thank you for making sure that that's clearly laid out in the communications, and I look forward to seeing, um, the, you know, the the more detailed uh, description of your approach there. Um, it's also great to see that we're successfully pursuing federal funding to help with these mitigation efforts. Again, not surprised, but good to see that um, demonstrated with that example, that Dillard example, Janine, thank you. Uh, you're asking about a million dollars of additional funding for fire mitigation. Um, which, knowing how much mitigation work like this costs, I'm not sure how far that gets us, I'm curious. Uh, if we have a current kind of sense of scale of what we're spending right now, and I know that's a hard question because I know it's infused with all kinds of things we already do, which whether it's. You know, replacing and maintaining our equipment or doing other things that have other benefits, so it's not easy, but are we spending twenty million dollars on wildfire mitigation activities or a hundred million dollars? I don't really have a sense of scale, it might help me think about whether a million dollars is the right additional amount.
Tyler, you want to comment on that? Tyler? You're on mute.
Is it there?
There you are.
Yep. All the good stuff comes out when you're on mute, right? Um, no, one thing I was going to say is Janine's right on that a lot of the things we're doing right now, um, will be kind of turning the dials up on. Uh, of course, overhead to undergrounding was mentioned, and you you brought the Dillard example, that one, you know, originally was twenty sixteen storm-related, but obviously will help with this effort too, so it's kind of. We can kind of double count some of these, especially if they fall in the high-risk areas. Um, things like she talked about uh, streamlining or or uh, I call them rolling taps, but I liked what what Janine talked about with going to the single phase where it's more of a vertical orientation, that's something that that we do. Um, right now that we'll crank up on, also the equipment replacements. Um, you know, that's replacing poles, replacing transformers, uh, ailing equipment based on inspection that. That we accelerated some of that work forward this year, and I'd say it was on the order of a couple hundred thousand dollars for, uh, you know, accelerating that work. And then the other things that were mentioned here, there'll be new things on is, you know, monitoring equipment that can get expensive, like you're talking about really quick, communications, infrastructure. And more automation. As far as scale to our our plan, um, you know, yearly, our. Our distribution work in that kind of arenas in the um, in the renewal and replacement, replacing old things or ailing equipment that's found in inspection. Um, that's about three point three million a year. Um, so you know, thirty thirty million over the thirty-three million over the whole plan. And then some other stuff we do, the enhancements additions is the category in the budget, if you saw about, uh. That'd be the reconfigurations and the overhead to underground, you know, right, right now, that's on the order of around, depends on the year and what project, but five hundred thousand to a million. And that's one we'll be turning the dial up on, so all to say really that that it's it's gonna, you know, in increase that group of work, maybe twenty percent with the million dollars, and so. It's probably going to be made up of lots of smaller efforts, like we talked about those different tools in the tool bag, but I think you're totally right on that if we do. Crank that up a lot or underground a lot, that's going to be a bigger dollar amount that we would come back in the budgeting cycle. It's just this one million dollars, we know we can, we can turn some things up and get benefit out of it right away, is kind of the thought.
Great, thanks, and Mindy, I see I'm out of time, I um, have a couple more questions or comments when once others have had a chance.
Right. Great, I think I saw Sonia's hand up.
Okay, great, uh, so, real quick, I had, um, looking back at the at some of the other questions and kind of thoughts here. So the feedback on mitigation, um, priorities and focus areas, that seemed, you know, fine to me. Um, I do agree with Matt that, you know, communications is going to be very key, that was one of the things that, you know, really, it it always comes up, how do people get information? Especially in those times of crisis, I'm I'm really pleased to see that more people are paying attention to those different channels and kind of figuring out how to do that. Um, ahead of the crisis so that they can get that that information and stay connected. Um, I do hope that our portal is. Uh, functioning, that, you know, emails and such are are a good way for people to get that information too. Um, the uh, P S P S. I know that I understand that that has the, you know, community risks associated with it when you turn power off. And I appreciate that we're doing, you know, certain things to make sure that we're getting that kind of communication to people. It does seem like there are definitely going to be times when it that's critical. And I'm wondering if, um, I know that part of the plan that you talked about ramping up, you know, visual. Inspections of the region, I wonder if there's a place for actual video surveillance of different areas that are higher risk, that are closer to different communities? Is that something that's being considered? You know, technology versus having people up in windy, um, dry conditions, because that puts staff at risk too.
That that's in essence kind of what the the pilot project that that uh, Janine was talking about, but.
Okay.
If you look at what the the California utilities do, they've invested a lot of money in a lot of artificial intelligence. Uh, and a lot of, it's not just uh, visual, it's also the weather stations. Um, and and they've um, they've been pretty successful with those programs, and so they also follow that up with manual, um, um. So once they go through these steps of triggering that that the camera tells them something, then they also have people involved too before power shut off, so they have people on site. So there's a whole series of things, but but you're right, um, you know, we we need to throw a lot of stuff at this to to really get good at it.
Yeah, and so, you know, to Matt's point too, a million seems like. I'm not sure how far that goes, if those are some of the kind of technologies that we really need to implement, um, I'm also curious, you know, obviously, we we got some funding for the undergrounding. Portion, does any of the FEMA money go to transitioning to metal poles, or is it really just only for undergrounding?
Um, that's a good question, but normally, uh, what you do is, um, you you apply with the design and and this um, cost benefit kind of things, and then if they approve that, then they pay for a certain portion. Usually seven, up to seventy-five percent of it, so uh, I I imagine that would be part of it too as well, so it's materials and so forth.
Okay, otherwise the metrics look good, um, annual review in May, I only wonder if that's enough time to hit the the June deadline, but maybe it is. Um, and yeah, other than that, looks good to me, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, President Schlossberg, I I think it's a really good um, conversation around investment. Um, you know, one of the things that um. the modifications to the strategic plan really emphasized was resiliency in both water and, and on the electric side. And, and therefore if you didn't see a really heavy dose of things that would contribute to the resiliency of the system, wildfire being just one piece of it, then that would be concerning because that's what, what you've identified as strategically important. And so, now some of these, like I mentioned earlier, they have a stacking of benefits. But there are also some types of projects that will be very specific to things like wildfires. You know, the situational awareness, now the difference between a red flag warning and a red flag event actually happening will trigger a response from us as a utility. And so we need to, to have a better way of determining what's actually occurring on the ground in the system. And so those types of investments could be very specific to things like wildfire mitigation. So in some cases it's a stacking, you'll probably see a really heavy dose of things that look like their resiliency. But then there's also some things that would, would be very specific to understanding climate and wind and situational awareness relative to wildfires. On the funding side, I have a feeling that there's going to be a lot of different opportunities to explore. And it depends on how we apply for particular grants. You know, I could see metal poles being part of that potentially, Commissioner Carlson. I could see undergrounding be part of that. I could see things such as better communications systems and, and things like that. Janine just talked about a partnership with the county around coming up with standards for communication. So I think there will be a lot of different opportunities that we can use to supplement what we ourselves and our customers are investing in on their, on our own. So, and I absolutely agree when you look at the importance of the communications in, especially PSPS situations is incredibly important. And it's not just during the event, but it's well before and well after the event where that becomes really critical. And so I think that, that will be an emphasis going forward. But thank you for the opportunity to weigh in.
I'll just, just add on real quick to, I can't remember if we've talked about it at the board yet, but we, we recognize the federal money and the flow of it's, there's some potential there. And so we, we've actually hired a person to help us with grant applications and and pursue that kind of money. So that, that's pretty exciting for, for a number of people here. So, so we're, we're, we're pretty happy about that and we'll be pursuing it. And wildfire is definitely one of the areas.
All right, John Borowski, if you have any questions or comments, it is your turn.
All right, thank you. Yeah, first question is on the inspection of the, like the cross members and the poles and stuff, is that in-house or is that contracted?
The inspection is contracted and then the data and all that get processed and the design package is done internally and sent to internal crews to complete.
Okay. So a couple of my things would be, you know, with, with the shortages in the labor market, you know, Frank has talked, or we've, we've talked about the fact that we're a little bit behind on vegetation because there's not enough crews. You know, maybe at some point we might want to look at, I know it's more expensive, but might look at, you know, do we bring in dedicated crews that are our own, that we can control rather than having contracted ones that we, we do have control over them, but it's, it's has a little bit of limitation. So that would be one thing I would look at. Another thing that I would like to have maybe in the metrics is when we go to the higher level for a PSPS and we go to the higher level of tripping, you know, and then you have to get it inspected. It would be nice to know what the time it takes to get that back online, you know, where, how long it takes each time we have to go out and physically inspect when we're at the higher level of risk, so that we know that going forward. Third thing would be actual numbers of times when we really have to shut down the system and do PSPS. If that is increasing year to year, then I think there might be some other opportunities for other types of mitigation. And what I'm thinking here is if we're having to shut the system down, totally shut it down, that has implications that are far reaching, you know, to people that have health issues, to businesses and stuff like that. So would there be opportunities for us, let's say to, you know, use our resources to help buy generators and sell them at, at a reduced cost? Or, you know, if we can buy them at, you know, buy 50 of them and give our volume discount to people who might need a generator for when their, when their power does go out. Things like that down the road thinking, you know, if it, if it happens once every five years, that's not a thing. But if we start seeing these things getting shut off once or twice a year, maybe there's an opportunity to help mitigate the people that are affected by that in those corridors. Not at our full cost, but to just keep that in mind. So those are a couple of things. And then the last thing I want to say is I, when I saw the helicopter trimming as a, as a a strategy, I had to go online and look at that and I YouTube'd them and it was, it was pretty impressive. I wouldn't want them to trim the trees around my house. It's pretty, it's pretty brutal, but it, it looked like it was pretty effective and quite a, quite an interesting way of, of doing vegetation control.
Yeah, I'd really say hats off to Tyler. He recognized that him and his team recognized that the, this, this opportunity, there's some, they were apparently, this crew was working in the area, the helicopter crew and and offered to come up and I can't remember how, it saves like weeks and weeks of, of trimming time and a lot of money. So we were really able to jump on this and make it happen. So I think it's going to be really good. But the things you're talking about John around the, the assistance for power shut offs is, is a big part of the, the work that the California plans have. And actually in the, the IOUs right now are really, there's a lot more requirements around how you do that and how you notify and how you take care of people. And, and so I expect that we'll, we'll have some requirements to do some of the things you're talking about, but we'll also have some opportunity to, to have some creative programs that, that kind of coincide with our whole resilience in planned preparedness kind of things. So, and we're already actually, I think, got a generator program where we chip in and, and help people. So I think those are really good comments and that's, that's a lot of work. That's going to be one of our gaps. I know it is.
Commissioner Borowski, one of the things that I know that the IOUs have had to do in California is to, is to do a probability analysis, which looks at analysis of, of not just the risk assessment per territory, but looks at past weather events so that they can actually lay that over the top of their system and say there's, you know, based on history, there's X percent chance that this particular area might experience a PSPS over, you know, that's obviously that's statistics and they might have one the very next year or two years in a row. You don't know, but they've, they've had to do that. I don't, I mean, we, we haven't done that. We, we may get to that point as it evolves. I, I don't know whether it'll be more statistically looking backwards or whether we'll just take the approach and kind of draw the line in the sand and say, here's where we go forward looking. And here's the types of communications. Here's the kinds of different tools that we can use to mitigate this. PSPS is just one of a lot of different tools. And so, and I think Janine's pyramid says it's really the last thing you want to ever have to do is to shut people off for all the different reasons that you talked about. But it does have to be in the tool bag and used when it's appropriate. And we, we just need to refine it further as to when that actually is.
And is there a, you know, I know like when we have an outage, it's like, okay, it's been outage for this long. Do we have, have that metrics for when we have to shut it down at the higher risk and the person has to actually go out and inspect the line? Are we tracking that and seeing how long that, that takes as opposed to doing it internally?
I know Tyler can probably give you a feel for when we have to go out and do an inspection, how long that might take for a typical feeder. It's going to be a little different whether it's upriver or in the South Hills, but Tyler can probably tell you, at least give you a ballpark on that kind of.
I, I just want to make sure we're clear that we are, we have not and don't have a PSP. We have not done PSPS's yet and we don't have that, that process formalized. So, but, but when we do, definitely keeping those metrics on the, but what we do have, like Janine talked about is that red flag response, you know, with the protection settings. And just so we're clear too, the, the requirement to go do a visual inspection after a trip is a, is a normal thing we do for every trip. A troubleshooter after, after that will go out and make sure before it's energized and report back to dispatch that there's not a tree on the line or, or a wire hanging or anything. Like, like Frank said, travel time is probably the biggest one for upriver. You know, you put 40 minutes on that. The troubleshooters, they're kind of amazing individuals. You know, response wise, they each take about 120 calls a year and the response time to answering the phone and then leaving their house is on the order of two to three minutes average. So they're on call all the time. So, you know, for upriver, I'd, I'd say you're, you're getting 40 minutes up there. A lot of, depending on whether they, you know, sometimes they have to assess the situation, see what's going on, get the instructions. And then you're into another, you know, up to an hour or two for patrolling that area. So sometimes they run across it really quickly and it's easy. Sometimes the thing is there's nothing on the line and it's just safety de-energize, but that is a normal process we do for every, every outage. The, the step we do add for red flags though, is a confirmation with, with the 911 supervisory number to make sure that we're not heading into a dangerous situation. Make sure there's no fires in the area. Of course, South Eugene area in this high risk map would be, you know, a lower response time because of the travel times a lot less.
Commissioner Borowski, I'll just say that I don't think you're going to see helicopter trimming on Fox Hollow Road in South Eugene. Just, just so you know, I don't want to, I don't want people to, to jump to that conclusion.
Agreed. Very good for the back country, but yeah, that's not our intent to use it for dense populated areas.
It may be at Fort Worth and Hilliard.
All right. So it's my turn. And then I heard that Matt had a call for more questions afterwards, but I just have a few questions. I think that this is a very well thought out draft plan and I really appreciate that. I am curious on the, the public side, how, do we know how many people so far are taking advantage of our undergrounding for people who are rebuilding up there? Is that something that's been popular? Is it too early because people are still having, not enough rebuildings happening? Or what do we know about that?
Commissioner Schlossberg, we are tracking those metrics and I would have to check with my team to get you the right number, but it feels like it's maybe around 10 or so so far. And I think part of it is that it's just early.
Got it. You might've already said this, so I apologize, but how many customers around total are we talking about in these like high wildfire areas?
That's another number that we have access to, but I'd have to look it up. You know, and it's really more a number of meters that we can give you a count versus people and houses. But I could get you a number of meters based on those high risk circuits.
Okay.
And I want to say it's in the, Tyler, about five or 6,000, maybe a little bit less.
I think that it was 5,500 customers that were out to the holiday fire. And, and those were the high risk circuits essentially.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm just curious on the, on the outreach side, I know that one of the metrics that you're using is by like how many social media posts or how many views? And that's all really great. But I don't know, like, is there a way, some kind of metric or something that we can measure that people are actually doing the things that we want them to do? So it kind of makes me think a little bit about our pledge to prepare. I think I've brought this up before, but like, I thought that was a really great campaign that we did for earthquake preparedness. And I know that like people posted their own things on social media. It's not really a great way to track how many people are doing it, but is there like a plan to do something like that where people can then like show that they've done their, whatever their preparations are? Or do we have like a, like a step that people can take individually to prepare?
I really appreciate that question because, you know, a part of our key messages is that wildfire preparation is a shared responsibility. Like we can do our part, but you know, people also have to be smart when they go out in the woods during wildfire season or even in their own backyards or creating defensible space. And as Frank was saying about stacking of benefits, the pledge to prepare program can easily be expanded to include wildfire preparation. Cause it's really some, there's a lot of similarities. It's just that if your power goes out in the summer, you're really thinking about how do you keep cool? How do you keep hydrated? How do you maintain refrigeration? And then those vulnerable populations, if they've got medication or on medical equipment that needs to be powered, that they have really special needs in those situations. But in the basic framework is already there. So it really is building on some of those existing campaigns. And the idea of kind of show us what you're doing is a great idea. So I'm going to take that and try to run with it.
Great. And do we still have the low or no interest loans for generators out there? Is that, is that program still going on?
Yep. And I'd say one of the other thing that's caught my eye is, you know, there, there's just so much money flowing in from the state and federal government. And which is great that we now have a grant coordinator who's like thinks starting next Monday. So we're really excited to welcome her to E-Web. We're probably going to bury her in ideas, but one of, I think ODO has a program with many millions of dollars for a combination of solar and battery technology. And I've been kind of throwing this idea out to some of our upriver partners about it, is there a way to develop a program where you could put some of that at one of like a recovery center? So if people have to evacuate and the power is down, that there is some kind of combination of solar battery storage at like the high school or something. So people can have communications and it provides that measure of safety. So it could be done at the household level or you could think of it more at a community level.
Great. I guess my last thing is I'm just really happy to see that we are coordinating with other utilities because obviously we can do all that we do in our service territory, but if the adjacent service territories, if we're not kind of all doing the same thing. I know that there's minimum requirements. But it's important for everybody to kind of work together. So glad to see that. And that's it for me, but we can start a second round. I don't know if other people besides Matt have questions or comments, but maybe we can keep them brief because we are around our stopping. Is that okay with the other commissioners if we do another go around? Okay. All right. So Matt, over to you.
All right. I will try and be quick here. Good move to hire an additional staff person to work on grants. Thank you for doing that. That will undoubtedly more than pay for itself. I wonder also if we might incentivize the troubleshooting staff that you mentioned Tyler. Thrilled to know we have people doing that, not surprising. I wonder if we might incentivize a staff person to locate upriver just to reduce that travel time or that response time. Just something to think about. You know, we've talked about the 1 million additional dollars and I just for the record, want to state that I support the use of an additional 1 million dollars for wildfire mitigation getting started right now. I don't think we should wait to do that. And I'd also be interested in evaluating additional investment as staff see short-term opportunities to significantly reduce risk perhaps once this plan is further refined. I also understand that the Oregon Department of Forestry will be updating their wildfire risk maps and the methodology they're using to develop those maps. I suspect that's on your radar. I see Rod nodding his head. Great. I think that will be important for us to, yeah, to incorporate into this. In terms of metrics, the metrics that to me, I think would be most meaningful would be one, just for context, the number of red flag days that we're having in our service territory. service territory, um, in, including going back historically, I think that'd be useful for us to see how that's evolving over time. The miles of tree trimming per year, the money spent on tree trimming per year, the miles of undergrounding per year, and perhaps the percent of system that's undergrounded, and the hours of public safety power set off per year. Um, thankfully, that's zero right now. Um, but if that starts to happen, I, I think tracking that would be useful. Uh, you asked about the, the level of review. It seems to me like an annual review seems about right. Perhaps that tapers off after a few years, once we all get more comfortable with all of this. And but just one other question is how are we working with the City of Eugene on wildfire mitigation efforts in the South Hills? Then I'll uh wait for the question, or the, the answer on that and then I'm done. Thanks very much.
Rod, do you want me to take that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, we've had a uh preliminary conversation with a number of staff at the City of Eugene, um, and mostly the park staff who are in charge of the urban forestry. And we've been talking about um aligning some of our uh leveraging some of their work because they're doing a bunch of fuels reduction work. So can we look at some of the areas they're doing fuels reduction, what area that we need to do tree trimming and combine and leverage and get more bang for the buck? Um, so that's one area of work that we're looking at. Um, we're also going to be working with the fire department more closely. They're on our list for when we do the, the protective setting. So they're alerted and notified that um those protective settings are in place, but I think there's more opportunity to work with our uh fire partners um and have them participate and maybe looking at our maps and get their sense of, are these high-risk areas, do they make sense to you? Do you have areas that you're really worried about keep you up at night that we should be paying closer attention to? So I think there's more opportunity there as well. Uh, critical infrastructure would be the last area that I just talked about. Um, we've been talking to our private telecom companies and getting a sense of where their critical infrastructure is, so we have it mapped um in our system. And we know if the, if we need to de-energize, that we're able to call them ahead of time and let them know so they can get generators out. Most of these towers already have generators and backup power, but they have alarms that go off and that's another area where our local partners are involved in that because they have communications for nine-one-one and um sheriff's office dispatch. So that's another area of coordination between us and our um city and county partners. There's probably more, I just haven't explored them all.
That's great, thank you, Janine.
Open to ideas.
And just to clarify, Commissioner McCray, it, it sounds like in your metrics um thoughts that really understanding the, the patterns of use of all the tools, you know? And, and when I think about that, I think about things like um when, you know, how often and for how many line miles do we have the extra sensitive settings set, you know? So, you know, last year we did it for this many line mile hours or, you know, just to, to see patterns develop um and then associate those patterns with the, what is likely going to be a very different climate in the future versus uh what we've seen in the past, just to, to understand the correlation. Um, of which also, you know, gets back to, I think, some of the importance of being able to check on uh what I'd call microclimate, um, you know, situations within our territory. So um you, you can't just look at the Eugene Airport and go, oh, here it is. Um, you, you're going to have to be able to look at things with a lot more precision. So that, that's, that was my interpretation of some of your metric comments was, was to look at really how we use the tools and correlate those with different patterns.
Yeah, yep, perfect, thanks, Ray.
Yeah, some really good ideas, thank you.
All right, John or Sonia, do either of you have another go-around of questions or comments? I see a no from John Borowski. Sonia? Nope. Great, and none from me. So, did you all get what you needed from us?
Yes, I, I think so. We got a lot of good feedback, really appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so we're just moving on to board wrap-up. I don't know if anybody has any last words that they want to say. Go ahead, Matt.
Uh, uh, yeah, I would just say again, um, thanks for all the work here. This is uh really solid and um, I appreciate all the work going into it.
All right. Anyone else? I'm sure if we go around, everyone's going to echo Matt's thank you and appreciation. Yeah.
When are the helicopters trimming?
They started this week actually, and they'll be done either over the weekend or early next week.
I wonder if they'll be up near Finn Rock at all on Friday.
All right. Uh, anything else from you, Frank?
No, thank you, commissioners. I think this was valuable, appreciate staff and all the work they've put in on this. And it, it really is important to get your thoughts on kind of direction and, and guidance. And so we appreciate your time and um your investment in the process with us. So thank you very much.
Great. Well, we ran a little over, but I appreciate everybody hanging in there and thank you to staff also for um working this evening. And um with that, we will adjourn our meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Good night.